Call to order of the Boynton Beach City Commission meeting on Tuesday, July 19th, at 2016, at 6:30 PM. May we have invocation by Reverend Ray Whitley of Coalition of Clergy, followed by myself of the Pledge of Allegiance? Please rise.
Let's bow our heads. Dear God, we come to you as humbly as we know how, knowing we are nothing without you. We thank you for your presence in this city and in our lives. We thank you because when we forget you, you remember us. Lord, as we begin tonight, we ask that you guide our thoughts, because they become our actions. In a time where evil is working overtime to divide us, we ask that your perfect peace bind us together. Finally, as we accomplish our goals, help us to do it while displaying your love, in our Savior's name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would like to make an addition to the consent agenda, 6N. I received this from Andrew Mack regarding an FPL easement for the dog park in Cortina. May I have a motion for the... may I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item 6N, approval of the FPL easement in BR Cortina.
Are we pulling items now?
I have no further additions. Yes, if someone would like to pull an item for consent, speak to staff. Now is the time to do it. Vice Mayor McCray, would you like to begin?
Yeah, I'd like to pull Item 6B, 6D, 6F, 6J.
D, F, and J, you said?
Thank you, sir. Uh-huh.
It's Items 6B, 6D, 6F, and 6J. Is there any additional consent items that need to be pulled? None? May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So move.
May. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda... amended agenda approved. We'll begin with informational items by members of the City Commission. I would like to begin. July 7th, I attended Suits for Seniors over at the Boynton Beach High School. It was me, Captain Coleman, Sergeant Roper, speaking with a moderated meeting with Boynton Beach High School, talking about the tools for success. I had lunch with DePrince, Race, and Zolo regarding the general employee's pension. Also, on the 7th, we had a judicial forum where I put the opening statements by each judge on YouTube for anyone's reviewing. On the 8th, I attended a mini-training with the Saks Group. I thought that was very informative, and I thank Eleanor for having us have that. On the 9th, I got dunked at the Pitmasters. I was in the dunking booth, and probably 15 to 20 times, I fell in that water. On the 10th, I played golf at The Links. I had a conference call with Israam Realty and spoke with other property holders at the corner of... at the intersection of Woolbright and Federal. On the 12th, I attended the strategic planning workshop along with the rest of the City Commission. On July 13th, I flew back to Washington, DC. I attended the Rotary International of Potomac, Bethesda, and met Buck Williams, the New Jersey Nets' all-time leader in points. And on the 15th, I attended the Sister Cities International Conference, which was a wonderful event. Definitely made plenty of good contacts with other sister cities in the country and in the nation. And I look forward with our Sister Cities Committee to provide more than art to our sister cities in Haiti and China, and our possible new sister city in Roma, Finland. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the City of Boynton Beach, from the students and residents, to have a cultural exchange with places around the world. And that is it for me. Vice Mayor McCray, would you like to begin?
Thank you, sir. First, I attended ribbon cutting for the new culinary located on Federal Highway. I also met with representatives from Israam Realty, along with other property owners, and attended a Chamber of Commerce luncheon. That's it, sir.
Commissioner Romulus?
I also attended the media training along with the mayor. I felt it was very informational. Met with the representatives, Mr. Rickman and representing Israam Realty. I attended the strategic plan workshop. And I also was part of the... our budget workshop today, which... today and yesterday. It was very, very thorough, I believe, and we covered a lot. That's all I have for now.
Commissioner Casello?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a coffee with Attorney Michael Leiner the other day. Also, as you know, I've been appointed to the District Attorney's Silver Home Task Force. We had our first meeting the other day up there in West Palm Beach, and it was very informative. We have some great individuals on there, and we're going to be meeting through the summer into the fall. I know Boynton Beach has a police officer assigned to the legal arm of that task force, and so Boynton Beach does have a place at the table. And I think some good decisions and directions are going to come out of these meetings. Also, I'd like to give a shout-out and a thank you to all the city's staff that made those last two days of budget hearings and meetings that gets the city in the direction it needs to go. Your budgets and recommendations, there was a lot of work involved. Like I said earlier today to you, it's not easy, but you made our job easier as far as moving the city forward. So I thank you again for all your hard work. Thank you.
Commissioner Katz?
Yeah, I also met with representatives from Israam Realty the other week, and I'll be scheduled to meet with some of the adjacent property owners and people of interest in the area in the next coming days, too. I haven't yet scheduled a specific date, but that's going to happen as well. I went to the first transit ribbon cutting of a propane tank over at Bethesda. Basically, it's just an attempt to make sure that we're using more, you know, energy-conscious and less pollutant fuels, so propane can be used to fuel automobiles. And this was basically for Palm Trans, so they're trying to transition to that cheaper, better fuel source. And I've been at the town square and budget meetings for the past two days.
Any other announcements? Seeing none? Our informational items, seeing none. Moving on to announcements, community, and special events. I will be providing certificates of appreciation to members of the Veterans Advisory Board. Would the following members please come up to receive your letter of commendation? Frank Brigoli, Stanley Gavlick, Thomas Kaiser, Kurt Luster, and Robert Manson. Tom, do you have anything to say? You're going to stay over there?
All right. Thank you so much.
About 11 years ago, our mayor, Taylor, and Bob Ensler, one of the commissioners who unfortunately died suddenly for us, asked us if we would become part of the city, which we were really happy to do. So I want to thank the city for the 11 years of the cooperation. We've asked a lot of favors, and really, they made our lives pretty easy. So the park that's over there now is 24 monuments and 12 granite memorial benches, plus the main monument, of course, 20 tons of beauty. And I want to say that we gift it to the city gratefully. But I would like to, at this time, ask the city manager and the mayor to please step down here. Please? Thank you. I'd like you all down, but I don't know if we can get you into the picture.
.............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
And I'd like to state that on August 14, 2016, at 2:00 PM, we will have observance for VJ Day at the Veterans Memorial Park. I hope everyone can attend and give homage to the wonderful men that served our country and our wonderful Veterans Advisory Group Board. Thank you. Moving on to announcement of the launch for the Development Department's webpage for current development projects.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission. Andrew Mack, Director of Development, City Engineer. I'd like to take this opportunity just to show you a project that we've been working on, and this is in response to the citizens' request and to provide more transparency in our process. And what we have done is we provided a webpage that has all the information on current development projects that are ongoing within the city process, and that information is now available through the city's website. And I wanted to just show you here on the screen how to navigate to that and what information's available. So as you can see here on the "I Want To" page, if you can see that, you have, under "Find," you have current development projects, right? I'll get my pointer out here. Right there. And then you can also navigate to it by the department pages. We'll go to the Planning and Zoning page. And you can see right here, there's a link here for current development projects, as well as here. And from this link, you can navigate to the webpage. You just click on the link, and it brings you up to this current development webpage. On this webpage now, you have all the information on current projects that are ongoing through the city. So as you can see here, you have Riverwalk, Ocean 1, 211 East Ocean Avenue, and Smart Starts Daycare. In that process, it gives you the information of where they're at in the current project status. As you can see, Riverwalk is in the DART status. It lists all the application types associated with that application. We also have a link to a Google Map, the site plan, and the actual project folders that has all the information that relates to that project, as well as... and I have it zoomed in, so it's harder to see, but also here you have the submitted date, the status of the DART review, and then you have... what's on here is the projected dates for any hearings or the Planning Development Board meeting. If there's no dates, we leave it as TBD, to be determined. And once we do know the dates, we'll actually populate this page, and you'll see those dates. So I just wanted to click on a... one of the icons here to show you what's available. This is the site plan for the Smart Starts Daycare, which was just submitted recently, July 6th. It takes a few seconds to load, obviously, because we're transmitting a lot of data We're running on the public Wi-Fi in here, so it might be a little slower.
We took the Wi-Fi.
I'll click on the link while we're allowing that one to... this is the Google Maps. And as you can see here, this shows all the projects that are current development projects, and it has the locations with the pins. And then you can click on these. You can actually transition between the roadmap and the aerial photos. And this will be continually updated, and the project will remain on this site here until the project is completed and CO'd. So you'll be able to track all the current projects as they go through the process, which is the Planning, Zoning process and under construction. The next icon here, which I clicked on the folder, this should take you to the city's Laserfish file system. And then within this, you have the project folders, and then you can click on whichever project you want to look at. Click on 211 East, or actually, Smart Starts Daycare. And then here you have the folders as a conditional use and a major site plan modification. If you click on those, you'll see in there you'll have applications, drawings, staff reports, traffic. Some of this information will have... won't have information in the folders. You'll see, like this one, there's the DART memo for the first review comments for Smart Start, staff reports. You can see there's no items as of this date. So again, this process was put in place so that we'd be more transparent and give the public more heads-up on when we have projects that are ongoing through the city and access to the information. So if you have any further questions, I can go through that. I don't know if that site plan loaded yet, but...
Vice Mayor McCray, would you like to begin?
Thank you. Andrew, is Feeding South Florida listed on the one that you just showed?
No, because they're only going through the building permit process. This is projects that would be major site plans or new site plans. These are projects that would come before the Planning and Development Board and the Commission.
Thank you. While we're there, I just want to tell you thank you, and that is because I got a call last week, and that company was all upset because they... nothing you all did. They dropped the ball. But I called you, and you put the ball back in motion and Friday they was issued their permits. I just want to tell you thank you for going beyond the call of duty, you and your staff. Thank you.
My questions are, when is the official rollout?
This is all active now. You can actually go on the city's webpage right now. I'm actually... this is where we're at now on the city's current webpage. We will, as working with Eleanor, will put a press release out, as well as we'll have some jump links from the city's current homepage, so that it'll be a little bit easier to navigate to.
Plan on issuing a tutorial, or how to...
At this time, I don't have that in the plans, but that's something we can work on, absolutely.
And this... like Vice Mayor McCray said, this is just for site plans, and it is not for... let's say if someone wants to redo their kitchen, this would not be a part of that?
Correct. Right. This is only for major site plans that come through the Commission or the PND Board.
Thank you very much. Last announcement we have is by Recreation and Parks Director Wally Majors about the Recreation of Parks.
Mayor, if I may just introduce this. We're... each month, we try to highlight a department. And speaking with the Commission over the past, and just some of the highlights of things they're working on and so forth, so we're going to... we keep it to about five minutes, but you'll see each month we'll have one department come before the Commission.
Is the next department on the future agenda items?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Lori. Appreciate it. Mayor, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Wally Majors, Recreation and Parks Director. As Lori indicated, as per the Commission's request, we prepared a very short presentation about the department to give you a little better idea of who we are and what we do. The department consists of seven community centers. Next paster. Or actually, I can try to do it here. We have three facilities, which include the pool, the lifeguard headquarters at the oceanfront park, and our tennis center. We run various youth programs. The after-school programs are licensed by the state of Florida, a wide, wide variety of art classes, dance programs, holiday break camps, all the way through summer camps and teen activities. Our adult programs range from, again, art classes, line dancing, square dancing, round dancing. We run the whole gamut with those type of programs, fitness, music, and tennis programs. Our senior programs at the senior center are very, very popular and very active. That's probably one of our busier facilities. Again, same thing there. We range in activities from card games to very active exercise classes and dances. We are looking at probably renaming that facility, because quite honestly, they don't consider themselves seniors. And we're trying to figure a way to... find a way to name that facility in a way that's more reflective of the vibrant nature of that it takes place inside it. A lot of family activities, breakfast with Santa, daddy-daughter dance, the extravaganza, our play outdoors, Unplugged. And this year, we're planning to, again, do some activities out at the golf course. We're even talking, perhaps, like a Father's Day out at the golf course type of thing. So the family fund will continue to grow as we go on. Our park system, again, 28 park sites, eight undeveloped park sites. Some of the activities within those are, of course, the updating of the system master plan. Wherever we can, we're going to try to put some shades on some of our playgrounds. We're expecting to be able to move forward with the non-motorized vessel launch. Again, that's for kayaks and canoes behind Intercoastal Park Clubhouse. Leash dogs of parks, that's something that's come before the Commission recently. And of course, through our Recreation and Parks Advisory Board, we always look at ways to improve our park system and activities whenever we can. And some of those activities at parks include our fit zone at Berry Free, the kayak and tours that we have behind Intercoastal Park Clubhouse, surf camp, outreach education that we work along with parks maintenance, and the Adopt a Park program. And as we mentioned before, we continue to brag about the fact that although we won't find out officially till October, we do anticipate that we will be conferred again as a nationally accredited department. We are very proud that this year, out of 151 standards, we met 149. So we are going to come before you again in November to give you, hopefully, the official announcement that we are, again, for the third time, an accredited department. And that concludes my presentation, and thank you for the opportunity.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have one comment. When you named the senior center, you know, please let me know what you're going to name it, because I go down there for lunch. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And I will gladly take some recommendations. Thank you very much.
Moving on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please step forward to the podium.
My name is Don. Don Crey. I live at 630 Castilla Lane. I'd first like to recognize Dave Aronberg, the State's Attorney for Palm Beach County, and Al Johnson, the Assistant State's Attorney for meeting with the homeowners of Riviera Drive and Castillo Lane last week to discuss the task force on the Silver Homes. And I'm certainly glad to hear that we now have a Boynton Beach voice on that task force. But what I'm really here to ask you is, I submitted the Costa Mesa ordinance to you several meetings ago, and I was curious as if the staff had chance to review this ordinance for any applications with our own ordinances that has some regulation over these Silver Homes.
One of our strategic initiatives was the strategic... what is it? Sustainable Neighborhoods, and we are looking at the transient homes ordinances for this upcoming year. So we have received it. It is part of our strategic plan for the 2016-2017 season. And so that is where we're at right now. We, you know, would like to move faster. However, it's... this is as fast as we're going. We're putting... what I can tell you is we are putting resources behind it to move it forward.
Okay, thank you. Does the... will the task force be issuing updates to the public on things that they've discussed and planned to bring forward?
I don't think it'll be... I think it'll be up to the individuals and bringing back to the communities for updates. I don't think it'll be official updates. I think this is more of an in-house type, you know, investigations and follow-ups versus public, you know, putting it out there for the public knowledge.
Okay.
It's still seeking direction, like, you know, how we're going to... I don't want to use, for lack of a better word, attack, but to, you know, indulge this problem that, you know, that behooves us, many of these communities, so...
All right. Thank you very much.
Debbie Lidle, 1700 Southwest 14th Avenue. Good evening. I attended the town square and budget meeting yesterday, and I want to say I'm very supportive of the town square redevelopment project. I hope you move swiftly on it and smarten responsibly in that direction. Also, I went for a drive today because I have... I'd also seen the CRA's summary of the comprehensive plan. So I took a drive to Meisner Park in Boca Raton and down Federal Highway past Atlantic Avenue in the Delray area. And I did not see any buildings above six stories along the Federal Highway quarter. And I hope that Boynton will not approve more... And I hope that Boynton will not approve more buildings like we have here on Boynton Beach Boulevard, the 15-story buildings in the downtown Federal Highway corridor. I hope you'll consider keeping us a coastal-friendly community. I would also like to make a comment that going to Delray, I was on Congress Avenue and went past Barrier Free Park, and I did not see any signage there along Congress. So the park is pretty hidden behind the tennis center, and I think it is a nice asset to the city. We should signage things and point out our positive things in the city. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow City Commissioners and concerned citizens of Boynton. My name is Tom McClure, and I reside at 2004 South Federal Highway, Boynton Beach, Florida. I stand before you tonight to deliver the second part of my remarks from a previous City Commission meeting, when I complimented all of you for your commitment to the city of Boynton Beach. Three years ago, I became the President of Seagate of Gulfstream Homeowners Association here in Boynton. Many of you have been there, to this location, and can attest how beautiful the property looks. Seagate is a microcosm of the city of Boynton, as Boynton is a microcosm of other governments across the country. When I assumed the role of President, the HOA was in an austerity mode, and was dealing with financial concerns, as all city governments are, and as we continuously chase revenue. Six months into my presidency, the Board of Directors made a decision to advise our management company to notify all existing contractors that we will be canceling all of our contracts and negotiating new ones. This notification advised vendors that had their contracts that were annual ones or five-year ones. When they came due, they would be renegotiated and not automatically renewed. The reason for this was because we, as here in Boynton, the Board of Directors are constantly changing, and new members don't have all of the information of existing contracts. For example, the air conditioning service for Seagate Clubhouse was for $1,500 per month on the existing warranty, which we found out resulted in changing the filters each month. We also questioned the automatic renewal of existing contracts where we're paying for substandard performance, which allows us to cancel existing contracts and get a far superior company at a lower price. Another example was the rebidding of our elevator contract. The change with the same level of service allowed us to reduce the cost of monthly service replacements by up to 50%, resulting in thousands of dollars in savings in operating funds. We also then entered into a discussion with our cable provider and negotiated a new contract, which included advanced services at no additional cost, and a door fee in thousands of dollars paid to our association. One of the canceled contracts was for washers and dryers throughout the complex. The contract renegotiated resulted in all-new state-of-the-art machines, and an agreement by the contractor to provide 100% of the revenue generated by the machines for 15 months to be paid to the association. The vendor also agreed collectively.
Thank you, Tom. We understand what you were saying.
I'd like to make a motion, we allow, extend this time?
I'm sorry. It's three minutes. It's three minutes for everybody. We cannot do a special exception. If you would like to speak to him after the meeting, you're more than welcome to speak to him after the meeting.
To the city's attorney, can we allow speakers more time at the podium?
Not at the discretion of the mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Sorry, Tom.
Good evening, everyone on the dais and in the audience. God bless you all. Minister Bernard Wright, CEO of Bernard Wright Ministries and the Wales Foundation and Real Talk Radio. I have a petition I would like to give to each and one of you all.
Put it on the desk right there.
As the petition reads, first off, I have some of the neighborhood here. Would you all stand just identify yourself? Thank you. And the petition reads, we are undersigned or being denied the use of our historically neighborhood pool because of policy changes implemented over the years by the Director Parks and Recreation Wally Majors. Due to those policy changes, neighborhood children, as well as adults, have been deprived the joyful use of the Denson neighborhood pool during logical and normal hours. These hours being from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM and 4:30 to 7:00 PM during the extended hours and the heat of the summer. Those hours are being utilized by those who can afford 60 to 75 per month swim team fee, as well as fees for swim lessons. We are asking for the support of the Boynton Beach City Commission and the city administration to change these times and policies which have deprived the use of this neighborhood pool, regardless of the loss of fees to the city, and at the same time, remove the fee charge for entry to the Denson pool for children up to the age of 12. Now, that is the petition, and there's over 200 signatures down. If I need to get any more signatures, I'd probably get the whole neighborhood's signature, because for too many years, over a decade, since Wally Majors has been here, and he says in his bio that when he came, things were free, and now he have made this thing like a franchise, and everyone is getting charged. Well, in the heart of Boynton Beach, the income, annual income, is very low. That's why we haven't been able to get developers in there. And these children not being able to go in the pool, not only because they don't have a dollar, but now from 9:00 to 1:00, they can't go in there. And these are rare hot hours. Only those privileged children, and there's only three or four in this whole body of water. Now, it is just ridiculous that these children, it was built, I mean, historically for the neighborhood. It's really not a community pool, it's for the whole Boynton, although Boynton can enjoy that pool, however, because it's just not big enough. But you can't run no kind of program out there at the expense of depriving these young black children, like my child right here. He's in summer camp, costs $500. Listen, let me tell you something. One a week, on Mondays, he goes to the pool for summer camp. When he got to 5:30, he can't go in that pool. It's hot, but it's open, it's only a few people there, they're lounging around with their flop ass in their shades, and they're not from the neighborhood. But these neighborhood children can't go in. Now, many days, I pay for these children to go inside that pool, because they don't have the money to get there. A lot of these young children, parents, whether they're working or not, these children are out there in the street, because we don't have anything to engage these children in the first place. I've asked for a budget to do that.
Thank you, Bernard, for this information. And I was not aware of this. We will look into this to see if, you know, what is exactly, like you're saying, if there's three children preventing 10 to 15 of our neighborhood children from allowing them to use the pool.
Not just 10 to 15, baby.
The program does not seem like it's working very well. So we will look into it, and I will get some numbers and get back to you.
Okay, I appreciate your expedite that.
Thank you.
God bless you.
And thank you all for coming.
Hi. Oh, boy. My name is Audrey Gerger, and I live at 331 Northwest 1st Avenue. And I had two topics. One was the sober homes, but we cannot discuss the sober homes tonight.
Yeah, you're more than welcome to.
All right. Sober homes are another name for a recovery treatment center, group homes for addicts. As a former commercial agent, there's been a loophole in the system to get these treatment centers out of the residential areas. This is not a disabled person living in a single residential home, where there's only one or two people, where maybe they do get somebody in. These are group people. They're not even related to each other. And they shouldn't be in a area where it's, where they have children, that children are in arm's way. I would say anyone in a sober home should be away from a school district, a certain area. They shouldn't be in residential. It is a treatment center, so it should probably be in a special zoning. I don't know whether you're working with the Commercial Board and with congressmen or anybody to get some of this changed, but I really would like to suggest that it, we should look into it. One of my other topics is the CRA. Please do not let them change our area of historical residential into mixed-use commercial. It will totally destroy our commercial, our residential area. They need to protect and preserve our areas. Now, one more thing I want to cover is beautification of Boynton Beach Boulevard. They talk all the time about beautifying it. Now, they've done a beautification of the sign on Federal Highway entering Boynton, but they, they haven't done a darn thing with the sign entering Boynton Beach Boulevard. Now, how difficult is that, to go ahead and dress it up a little bit? You can hardly see it, first of all, the color's horrible, the size is small, and there's nothing there to really attract it to make it beautiful into entering Boynton. So I'm suggesting that that be considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Harry Woodworth. I live at 685 Northeast 15th Place, and tonight I'm speaking as the President of INCA. We had a board meeting last night. You guys asked us to come back with what we liked about the CRA plan. We had a meeting last night. The consensus of the board is a letter that I have here. I'd like to read it. I'll paraphrase it, because I'm really lousy at reading letters, but I'll give you all a copy after I'm done. Mayor and Commissioners, the time is now, the place is here. Boynton Beach is prime for redevelopment and for developers. I think it's the only place in town right now. The south, the county's filling up, South Florida's filling up. The days of "we'll build anything" are over. They need us as much as we need them. It's a time for partnership. I'm paraphrasing, but we'd like to see a partnership between the city, developers, and residents. For 20 years, over 20 years, INCA communities have promoted desirable development. We've been at every charrette, we've been at every workshop, we've been at every budget meeting, I think we've been at every meeting the city's had for almost 20 years. We're not standing up here afraid of anything. We just want the best the city can do with this, because we are now in the driver's seat a little more than we've ever been. Okay, so all we're asking you to do is, the current plan is wanted. We desire it, we like it, we like most of what was proposed. Our only concerns, our only concerns are a couple of height limits that slipped into this baby. It's more than a consolidation, it was an increase. So our concerns are primarily height limits directed, which directly affect appearance, ambiance, congestion, and quality of life. Firm heights limits must be established for all land uses. Decide what the limit should be based on public input, previously adopted plans, and stick with them. It doesn't matter whether the heights accommodates elevators, air conditioners, TOD bonuses, whatever the heck that is undefined, or whatever. Just tell us what the final number is, period, please. I mean, that's, how hard could that be to do? In the proposed consolidated CRA land use plan, INCA only opposes a couple of things. On Federal Highway, please maintain the heights on the already adopted Federal Highway Corridor Plan. It's been out there for years, it hasn't been built out, it's perfectly realistic. Don't expand 150 feet south. It's bad enough where it's at. It goes down to Ocean. Don't take it south of Ocean until we at least get something working on what we've got up there. No creation of 100-foot activity zones. We all know what that is. You guys are meeting with the developer week after week. We all know what that's about. Just don't do it. There's no need for it. That's not an activity node. It's not walkable from anywhere. If you don't believe that, walk down Federal and look both ways. We realize that this reasonable indefinite heights in land use are only the first step in all of this. We ask to be involved in what goes forward, but just please, superior architecture on all sides of the building, open space for civic use, compatibility with and proper transition to surrounding communities. Compatibility is one of the three things development is all about. And please, adequate parking onsite. If you build it, park it. It's not that complicated. Fort Lauderdale does it just fine. If you build it, park it.
Thank you.
Buck Buchanan, 807 Ocean Inlet Drive. So there were these two guys standing on a street corner in Boynton Beach in front of a new building. First guy looks up and says, "Man, that's a tall building. It's 90 feet tall. It's gotta be." Same guy says, "No, it's 65 feet." Says, "Really?" He says, "Yeah, that's 65 feet." Said, "Now, the developer did get another 10 feet to hide the elevators." And a transoriental development bonus of 15 feet. So the first guy says, "So that's not a 90-foot building?" Says, "No, that's a 65-foot building." So the first guy says, "Well, I've learned two things here today. In development math, 65 can equal 90." And the guy says, "Well, what's the second thing you learned?" Same thing I learned is, if you ever run for office, I'm voting for your opponent. Now, people, there's a revolution going around the country. People are tired of government doublespeak and obfuscation, and there's a lot more to development, obviously, than just the height. Even before you get to the, say, if you're in a 65-foot area, even before you get to that, you should have all these things like the adequate parking and desirable architecture and all that. But at some point, there has to be an exact cap on that height that the people deserve to know. That doesn't mean that everybody's gonna get that or gonna work up to it, but the citizens need to know, so that everything doesn't look like wheel and deal and deals cut, you know, out of sight and all that. So please, let's get to that point in this whole process. Lay out the number, and don't be that second guy.
Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. I'm not as eloquent as they are, so sorry. I wanted to speak to four things that I've observed in the last week or so, and yes, this is kind of repetitive. If you've been sitting, we've all been sitting together for two days now. I do believe option one for the old schoolhouse is the best option. I was in a total state of panic last night, sitting there going, "Why did, why was this chosen to have a facade or knock-down pieces or parts? We need to keep our building." I just think that's absolutely crazy. It's a beautiful historic building. It's our centerpiece. And while I am not an advocate of only public use, I fully think we should be renting out spaces in there for art galleries, restaurants, you know, Subway, any kind of gift stores, anything to come in and help bring money in to help pay for it. But I do think it should be fully kept, and I think, and from what I understand, it's in great condition and can handle it. My second issue is the height issue. I've been arguing this for ages now, most of my life. The voters mandated a 45-foot height limit, so at the end of the day, every time you go over 45 feet, you are screwing the voters, because this city voted for this years ago. And again, it's ordinance 82-1. So I understand the five foot for the parapets or whatever, but no one moved to Boynton Beach to see, to living in canyons and concrete. Everyone moved here because they liked the nice, fresh breezes. No one's even looked at the environmental impact of having all these buildings out blocking our breezes. No one's looked at all the kids with asthma and emphysema. And being a teacher, I see kids with asthma all the time. What's gonna happen when there's no fresh air coming in, because the buildings have blocked it? Number three, as Harry more eloquently put it, if you're gonna park it, if you're gonna build it, you need to make sure you have parking for it. That will solve our height problem. There is truly no city in the world, and I've been in 25, 30 countries in my life, that I've ever seen a city that has adequate parking, especially not any place you ever actually want to go. We really, 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 really need to make sure we're keeping on top of our parking problem, and that is going to be an issue in the future, whether you want to think about it or not. And I'll end on a happy note. I want wildflowers in the medians. I've seen them all over the place. They are beautiful, they are drought tolerant, they are low maintenance, and best of all, the local wildflower group here in Palm Beach County will put them in and pay for them and take care of them. So that would be free to you. And look, I left you with time.
Butch Boni, 450 Horizons East, Boynton Beach. And also the President of Sterling Village. I would like to say a few remarks. One, Mr. Mack, thank you very much. That new website for site development plans and projects couldn't have been more responsive to our requests, so thank you very much. We really appreciate that. I would like to go over some of the things that previous speakers have said. The activity node, Wilbright and Federal, we'd like to see no change to the existing plan. Federal, south of Ocean, which is our north yard, we would not like it at 150 feet. That, we just, we just can't see that at all. Ocean Avenue, just leaving it as it is with no change would be great. Town Square, High School, City Hall, no height change there. That would be fine. And if we're gonna establish a historic district, I think we should, we should do it as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Michael Weiner. I'm here on behalf of ISROM tonight. They asked me to come to listen to what it was that the public had to say, and I think it is important, and they believe it's important, to hear and vent these issues. it is important, and they believe it's important, to hear and vent these issues. A couple of things that I'd just like to note. First of all, Las Ventanas was built in order to be pedestrian-friendly. Obviously, a node is necessary. It was necessary before Riverwalk was there. Things that add to that node in the original plan are something that you've looked into and considered before. We want to see a great Las Ventanas. The second thing is, is we all remember the downturn of 2008, and fortunately for us in Boynton Beach, related swooped in and got Casa Costa. And got Casa Costa, and we were back, and that building was occupied long before some other places were occupied. And one of the greatest things that helped rescue it was given the sustainability and the endurance of that building, its height, its views, the fact that it could be a high-class building which would contribute to Boynton Beach. That helped to bring it back. So height in and of itself isn't wrong. It probably makes things sustainable and enduring. The third thing is, is I noticed that there are people commenting on height tonight, and the issues have to do with fresh air, asthma, environmental, appearance, ambiance. Those issues, we'd like to address. We're all on the same side. The question is, is height a tool in the toolbox of both the city and the developer that can precisely do what are the complaints of your citizens here tonight? Let's look into that, not draw any lines quickly. Take a look at that toolbox and see how we can solve the situations that are involved. Thank you for my time here tonight. I will take this information back to Mr. Rickman. I know he will be interested in it.
Before you leave, did you state your address?
10 Southeast 1st Avenue, Delray Beach, Florida. Though I am a property owner and have an office building here at Seacrest and Boynton Beach Boulevard.
And so, are you being paid to be here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maxine Cheeseman. I'm actually, I'm an attorney. I'm representing Ocean Park, 3100 Ocean Park, quiet title action that you have on...
I'm sorry, you cannot speak. We already have that as an agenda item. You'll have to speak at that time.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Thank you.
Herb S. 1711 Woodfront, Boynton Beach. I want to compliment the entire commission for what, I've been at two days with you at the budget meetings. I want to thank the mayor for giving us a little extra time to state our case and to speak. I appreciate it. You worked hard. All of the departments presented their situations, and there was give and take. We're at 7.9. That's good, because you, once you did it, you can't go back up. You can go down. However, within 10 years, we're gonna have a major problem, maybe even sooner. One of the previous speakers at the budget meeting brought up a very important situation: pensions. Now, anybody that's endowed with the pensions now, they're not gonna lose it. Whatever they got, they got. But anybody new coming in, there has to be a new take on what the city and what they're gonna put into it, like a 401. Like I say, anybody that's in a drop, anybody that's in the pension, what they're entitled to, no ifs, ands, and buts, they're gonna get it. That'd be wrong to take it from them. But unless we put a handle, unless we put a handle on pensions, and at this current rate, within 10 years, we're gonna have, maybe even sooner, a major problem. Hopefully, you take this under advisement. It's, I'm not anti, you know, pension, but it has to be modified. The state has done it, other people are doing it, maybe they, it just has to be done. And I think, hopefully, you're sensible enough to address the situation, and hopefully that this will be taken into consideration. I want to, again, compliment the commission on what you've done. It was a tough job, but, you know, people got it out. But the main thing is, let's put it here, and I will be talking more on budgets. As far as climate change, something new hit the market. Cloud cover from the equator, clouds, are moving from the equator up to the pole, up to the North Pole. What that will do eventually is it'll put a cover on the ceiling of Earth. And what will happen is, anything that wants to go, it'll cover and increase climate change as we know it now. That's happening. One other thing, Greenland has lost over 1 trillion tons of ice. Can't make this up. You cannot make this up. So I'd like to see the city consider a carbon tax. I would like to see the city come up with a carbon tax and be serious about, the only other question I have, Mr. Mayor, did you get that, those, the documents? Did you get that?
Yes, I did get that.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Reidy, 329 Southwest 13th Avenue, here in Boynton. We support the consolidation of the various CRA redevelopment plans. We agree that the CRA area needs redevelopment, and for the most part, agree with the proposed redevelopment plan. We totally understand that the city budget has over $4 million of unfunded needs and over $35 million of unfunded pension obligations. We recognize that these unfunded obligations are not the fault of the current commission, and that this commission is working to address the city budget issues by supporting development. Residents support your efforts to deal with these legacy issues. We agree totally that the city needs redevelopment to generate tax revenue. All we're asking is that the height in currently approved future land use plans not be increased. This has minimal impact on the proposed consolidated plan and can always be reviewed in the future with appropriate citizen discussion. Raising these heights now would be a questionable decision. This isn't, sort of like back when we sold the Barrier Islands, which was a very foolish mistake for the city to do. Raising these heights now locks the city and residents into heights that can never be lowered in the future. Where would your future growth take place if you max it out now? If you take it to 150 feet, where do you go from there? Thank you very much.
Chair, I'd like to motion to amend the agenda to extend speaker time from three minutes to five minutes. I'd like to get a second.
Second? For public audience. So the question is, is that, if you want to put an item on the agenda for people to speak about, I'll be more than happy to have a specific item on the agenda so everybody can speak to what they'd like to speak about regarding, as, for an example, the canal issue. But to allow people, the audience, to speak ad nauseam for what they like, you know, are you saying that we should allow everyone to speak five minutes instead of the three-minute limit that I put on everyone?
Tonight, if anyone else sees fit.
No, this is a permanent...
No. My motion is for this meeting to amend item four on the agenda, public audience, from three minutes to five minutes.
And so, you would, so that would mean that everyone who's...
The motion's been seconded.
So I, well, I'm unclear. So you're saying that everyone who has spoke now has five more minutes to speak?
They have two more minutes if they choose, although it didn't seem like many people would exercise that. But nevertheless, that's my motion. It's been seconded by Commissioner Cassell.
City attorney, is this allowed?
That's an appropriate motion that should be voted upon.
Okay. All in favor of allowing five minutes on tonight's only meeting for public audience? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Passes four to one. Anyone who would like to speak? I don't know how to figure out how much you spoke earlier, so I will give everyone an additional five minutes.
Two minutes. Motion was two additional minutes.
But I don't, okay, if you only want two minutes for them, I was giving them five.
Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me all right? In concluding to my remarks, collectively, all the actions that were taken by the association resulted in a common surplus to the association of $114,000, which was transferred to the reserve account of the association, resulting in a balanced budget and fully funded reserves. Additionally, the HOA did not have to increase its dues in 2016, and it's anticipated that there will not be an increase in 2017. I'm not sure, but this statistic could well be one for the Guinness Book of World Records. Bottom line, ladies and gentlemen, thinking outside of the box and not going with the status quo is not necessarily a bad thing. We don't need to continue to be led by the developers to determine how we operate our city. Take a look at our own city, our own contracts, and see what we can do to save the money as we did in Seagate of Gulfstream. Thank you so very much for your extra time tonight.
Three comments.
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor McCray.
Before we move on, since it was brought up about the Denson Pool, I just want staff to check on, did we get grants for swimming lessons? You can bring it back to me later. And also scholarships, in the past, we had scholarships for those who could not afford to swim. You know, we did make provisions that they was able to use that pool. If you can just check and see, you know, what happened, please, so that we can get an answer for Reverend Wright. Thank you.
And yes, I'd like to see the numbers of the actual participants of the programs versus the average numbers on the other times that the pool is open for all. Moving on to administrative. Oh, you want more time, too? Oh, yeah, absolutely. Everybody can speak again. I'm sorry.
All right.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
I'll repeat. Herb S. 1711 Woodfront Drive, and thanks for the extra few minutes. I would like, I would like to say on this height situation, many years ago, it was, we fought even a 45-foot height limit. I live on Wilbright and Congress Avenue, the building up there. What they did is, they agreed to one height level, and it exceeded, it exceeded, again, with elevator shifts. I think the people, I think this commission should listen to people. Development is good. I'm all for development. But 150 feet or 115 feet, and one person said before, where do we go from there? So I hope that this commission does take that into their consideration. The other thing is, I spoke to a commissioner tonight. I serve on the golf board, okay? I served on the library board, I served on other boards. They're on a, not in, I forget the word, the judicial type of boards that, like planning and zoning and so on and so forth. But I see here that you have open boards that you need, and I would like to see the commission pass. I'm a retired person. I would like to see me get on another board to see if I can, and I've been pushing this, as Commissioner Mac McCray knows, I've been pushing this, and Cincello knows, to open up these, the library board, you know, and any of these boards. If I want to serve on it, it's with your thing, and we're only allowed to serve on one board. I feel that people want to put in extra time and help the city and do this. I see a board, I see a board right now that interests me. I haven't filled out the application. But the library board, I was on it. I helped get the library extended and built. And McCray knows that, and he...
Herb, your two minutes is up.
If you would like to speak, you can speak longer.
Yeah. Well, it's five, I get five minutes.
Yeah.
I'm almost done. But basically, basically, I'd like you to consider that. And listen to the people about the height. Thank you very much. I didn't see that.
Again, Mr. Brunner Wright, CEO of Brunner Wright Ministries and the Wales Foundation and Real Talk Radio. Let me just say, there are a few scholarships, and those parents, those children down there do not get to exercise those scholarships. A lot of children, a lot of parents don't like giving up their information in that respect. And you have free swim lessons, but like, three days. How a child gonna learn how to swim in three days? But here's the thing, we're talking about 365 days a year, and we're talking about the entire summer. From 9:00 AM to 1:00, it is very hot. These children can't go in there because they're not taking swim lessons, okay? Now, it's only a big old body water with only a few people in there. I have pictures of it. In fact, I had Mr. Cassidy come and just take a look, just, you know, for evidence sake. We run out of the pool at 4:30, and they give the swim team parents from 4:30 to 7:00 to get in there for those children to swim. I was a dive island swimmer. And we had 45 minutes for swim team practice. If you ain't in there in that window, you get disciplined to God be the glory. They shouldn't have that luxury with these children in the neighborhood. Originally, historically, that pool was placed there for the neighborhood. We couldn't go on the beach. I had another swim in that canal with the gators and marquessons, okay? So it's not big enough for a community pool. However, the community is invited, I mean, welcome, but they don't, and never will probably go up to maximum capacity. But the thing about it, in these programs that you are running, you're depriving these children from being able to go in this pool at these reasonable, normal hours when it's hot, when they ain't got nothing else to do. And I am sitting in my stomach from it because originally, I know, hey, man, listen, when Karen Simms was alive, these things were free. And these children in that neighborhood can exercise and get out of the streets and have things to do. My child out there now, $500 cash dollars out my pocket, baby. And know what? He can only go in that pool on Mondays. That's when they go at summer camp, okay? Now, 5:30, he can't, but it's hot. But there are children in there, and not very many. And now, another thing, you got those swim meet lines in there, they are so lazy, they can't take them up, that I got to be incumbent if I do go to the pool, go under every time I want to go and use this big old body water. This should be taken out unless they having a swim meet or doing swim practice. It's simple to take the lines out. Give us the body water to enjoy ourselves. It's there to enjoy ourselves, and that's the size of it. Point blank, period. To God be the glory. If we can't now accommodate the neighborhood along with the swim team to go in that pool during these hours, it's simple, you can easily do it. And the fees that you get doesn't sustain the pool. It doesn't sustain the maintenance of the pool, because I've been in there. I take my child in there. You might make $9 a day, except for the programs. I have no problem with the programs, expenses. But when it is expensive, depriving this neighborhood child, hanging around that pool want to go in and camp, and I ain't got nothing but some big bills in my pocket, don't want to give none of this hell right now because I want to break it. Guess what? But I have to. Children got to go in that water, man. Similar to that, they don't have nothing else. To God be the glory. Ask that y'all expedite, considering this, come into an agreement to accommodate those children during those hours, snatch that dollar price up to 12 years old, charge an adult, sure enough, $2, but let them children go in that pool. Them neighborhood children don't have the money. That little dollar, they gonna run to the store with it. I'm there. I'm in the streets. My ministry comes out the streets. I live in the neighborhood. I'm the one that watching over this city where I live at. There's my man there.
Reverend?
Thank you. To God be the glory.
Thank you.
Debbie Lidle, 1700 Southwest 14th Avenue. In no way do I mean to be disrespectful to you, sir, about your children and swimming, but I have children that have to play in sprinklers and play in their yards. You know, they don't get that privilege either, sir, so it's not like you're being treated different than the rest of us.
You're sure you go ahead. But they can't, they got to...
Okay, on to a budget item. I'm sorry, I did not attend all the budget hearings for all the hours that y'all were there, but I did have a couple of ideas. In hospitals, nurses have to sign contracts when they work for tenant hospital. I know I've heard the police department invest $100,000 in new hire employees. And in the nursing hospital field, they have to sign a three-year contract that they'll stay with the hospital or repay part of their training fees. I think, you know, the city could be more open on their employment ideas and recruiting. I also believe that the city could hire more part-time employees that would not use benefits at the same rate as a full-time employee, which would possibly help our pension programs. And then there's the volunteer aspect of community service people that would be glad to contribute volunteer hours for community service and just to help the city maybe in the capacity of inspectors. Apparently, our medians aren't being maintained properly. You know, there's other things in the city that they might be able to help with. I know there's, in churches, a lot of volunteerism that goes on, and they want to give back to the community. So you could tap into some resources and use your local community to help you provide, you know, additional services. Thank you.
Real quick, on a little lighter note, I'm having a party. So, Kim Kelly, 529 East Ocean Avenue, Hurricane Alley. I just want to give you a little update... I just want to give you a little update on what we're doing. We got the Summer Says-All coming up. It's our 23rd year anniversary in downtown Boynton. It's gonna be a fabulous event. Yeah, that's Gal Boynton, right? We got like, three bands, couple guest appearances coming in. We have over 20 vendors. It's amazing. We have some amazing art vendors coming in. So I just want to invite the whole town of Boynton to come down and celebrate 20 years in downtown, and gonna hand out some flyers. We're doing it right, people. So that's July 30th, Saturday, from 3:00 to 11:00, on the corner of 4th Street and Ocean Avenue. It's gonna be in Dewey Park and Hurricane Alley. So please, everybody come out and enjoy.
Thank you. How many people are you expecting?
Five.
Five. I hope there's a few zeros there.
That's the number I'm told, no. Well, you know, as we talked, my dream number is 10,000, but, you know, we'll start with 20 and go from there. But, yeah, we got everything in order. We got portalets, we got, we just, we got, we got jugglers, we have stilt walkers, we have caricatures, artists, we have balloonists, we have things for the kids, we have food truck, we have pizza in the park, we have an amazing DJ in the park, we have bands out back. It's just gonna be an amazing community day event, and we really want everybody to come out. So, on, in that note-
We're looking forward to it.
Yeah, I am too. And thank you, by the way, for supporting me and CRA, and we're gonna make it worth your while.
You forgot to mention, there's free beer here? Free beer tastings. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, was there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, moving on to administrative. There is one request. Commissioner Cancelo?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm gonna table this, this Christian Zanuto. There's no information on him, no qualifications, so I'd like to table it until, unless he's here in the audience, and like to get up and introduce himself. Not seeing him, I'd like to table it.
Do I see here a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, his, his appointment is tabled. Moving on to the consent agenda, we will start with the polled items. Is there any more that to be pulled besides B, D, F, and J? And the reminder, reminder that there's an N, which is the easement on for the Cortina Project. Seeing none, moving on to item B, the approve, the approve the inter-local agreement with the town of Briny Breezes for the provisions of fire suppression, emergency medical and fire lines, life safety services for the term October 1st, 2016, through September 30th, 2028.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if Chief want to come up, or Laura, whoever's going to address the questions, but I do have some.
Both.
Okay, that's good. Okay, this is a 12-year agreement, and what we're doing is we're charging them like $3,056, $356,725.14, and that's about the first year, and then it's gonna go up for 4% after that. And my take is that we do have an out clause on this, just stated to us today, I just want to have it stated for the public that this is what we, an income that we will be picking up by servicing the town of Briny Breeze with our fire department.
Yes, sir. We're pleased to, pleased to tell you tonight that Briny Breezes had contacted us. Our 12-year agreement expires on September 30th of this year. We've been serving them for quite some time, and they have indicated that they're pleased with our service. And Chief Joseph and I sat down with Alderman Giravati, and he's in the audience, I see. I don't, I, I know, I thought Alderman Behringer was coming, so I don't know the gentleman. Oh, okay, that, we haven't met yet. Hello. They're both in the audience. They would like to renew, or actually will enter into a new contract for another 12 years, and we are pleased to bring that forward to you.
Thank you. I'm glad the two of you are here. I did not pull it to deny it. I pull it just for the record that the citizens can understand what is going on. Today, when we went over the budget, we had a shortfall, and I'm just saying, this is a way that the city of Boynton, we are kind of closing in the gap. Motion to approve Resolution R. 16-086.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item pulled was Proposed Resolution Number R. 16-088, supporting the expansion of South Tech and creating a third charter school, the South Tech Success Center. Vice Mayor McCray?
Thank you. I had this pulled, this was one that was brought in by Commissioner Romulus, and when it, anytime that we bring anything good, I'm just saying, can anybody here want to address this? I'm just saying, for the public, to explain what we're doing.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jim Kidd. I'm President and CEO of South Tech Academy and South Tech Preparatory Academy. The school that we're wanting to open next year would serve a population that currently is underserved in Palm Beach County. It would be ESE students that are functionally able to become employed and probably graduate high school, and at-risk students that currently aren't served in career academies. We believe that we can educate and make employable larger numbers of these students. There's no program like this in Palm Beach County. School District doesn't have anything like it. And we decided to step up to the plate and try to do it for this population. So your support would be instrumental in making this happen. Do you have questions?
No, I don't have questions, but I do have a comment I want to tell you. First of all, thank you for looking out for those who are less fortunate. And it's something that we're doing where you all need to toot your own horn. I'm just saying, word of mouth is the best way of advertisement. Sir, I gave you tonight a chance to advertise your school. That's what I'm saying. Commissioner Romulus, you know, is a product of South Tech. I'm just saying, she might want to, you know, hype on her school. I'm just saying, if it was my school, I know I'd jump on it, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity, and I'm very proud of Kristana, too. She was a great student and is being a great citizen.
Sir, I'd just like to say that I'm not a big fan of charter schools, but I've toured South Tech, I've been there for a few occasions that you had down there. I'm very impressed with the school. I, myself, back at home, I am a, a graduate of a tech school. It served me well in my career. So I appreciate you taking this up. I know, I know it's not an easy thing. You compete with public schools for dollars. But I think in this case here, this cause is well worth it, it's a worthy cause, and I would support it.
Thank you very much. All of you are welcome to visit anytime and see what we did. Very transparent.
Thank you. With that being said, I'd like to offer a motion to approve-
Vice Mayor, before you do that, I don't think it needs to be stated that I'm biased to South Tech. I love that school. They, they provide a foundation for me to, you know, really just catapult me into the future that I currently have now. But, Mr. Kidd, I really would just ask you, would you mind, or Mr. Bogus, do you guys have any statistics on how many other schools that, that would serve this function in the state of Florida? Are there other schools that do this? What would that number be? Do you have that information at all and share with us?
Good evening, Commission. Director of South Tech Schools, Jay Bogus. When it comes down to data for the entire state, no, I don't have that. But what we did look in comparatively to what the school district in Palm Beach County is putting out, is this is a population that is grossly underserved. And, and looking at it, there are many at-risk type of schools that have been established and set up, both by the school district and the charter school movement. However, they're not doing it the way that we're creating South Tech Success Center. The reason South Tech continues to put out an A-rated product and put out the kind of student that you've turned out to be and the, the kind of citizen that you are, is because of the career academy focus. The 13 different career academies is what gives relevance to a student every day and gives them purpose in their education. So this at-risk kid is the kind of student, or ESE student, that we're really looking to target. And in looking at the at-risk piece, yes, they're trying to get a high school diploma, and we're going to provide that. But what other schools are not doing anywhere in Palm Beach County is to provide the industry certification and the career readiness and workforce readiness that's going to propel them, like it did you, to their next-generation future. So that's kind of the, the thing that, when you look around Palm Beach County, nobody's going to do it like we're going to do it. And really, ensuring the success of our young people is what we're all about.
Bogus, I'm gonna steal that motion from you, Vice Mayor.
One second. Just to echo what Commissioner Cancelo said, I work in the public school system. I've been very vocal in my opposition to charters, but South Tech is one of the exceptions to all of the horror stories you read about in the newspaper about misappropriation or theft of funds, about refusing to serve special needs communities, whereas South Tech right now is stepping right into that fray, full force to take on those types of students and provide them the services they deserve and that they legally are mandated to obtain. So I definitely commend them for embracing the, the actual reason why charters exist, to provide alternative programming that the school district does not, and to not shy away from the students who need the most help, but to embrace them and provide them alternatives that the public school system in its, in its massive scale might simply not be able to provide in certain situations. So I commend everybody at South Tech for, for venturing into what's a more expensive endeavor to try to provide the services for these students, not just operating a school for profit, usually at the expense of students. They are the opposite of the, the negative stereotype that's out there for charters.
Commissioner Romulus, before you make your motion, I'm, I'm not biased either, but anytime anybody say FAU, I don't mind saying hoot, hoot, okay? Thank you.
Okay, so-
Wow.
Commissioner Romulus, would you like to make the motion?
I'd like to make the motion to approve Resolution R., the, where are we?
16-088.
16-088 to approve South Tech.
This is a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. A resolution approved. On to item F. Authorize the expenditure of a not-to-exceed amount of $60,000 with loose police and security equipment for police equipment and ammunition.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, this is not, wasn't one of those items that we could have piggyback off of?
Actually, sir, this is just a procurement technicality. This is a budgeted item, but we are going to exceed the amount that we can exceed with a single vendor without going before the commission. So we're just coming to you to request permission to exceed that amount.
Because we have a Florida contract number, and I'm not gonna read all those zeros, but anyway, as long as you, you're happy, and that, you know, you brought it before us, I'm gonna offer a motion that we proceed.
Do you have any comments?
Chief, how, what's the shelf life of ammunition?
Well, in Florida, it can vary because of the humidity. You have to run, you run into the issue of humidity and primers and reliability for it. So it really depends on what type of ammunition and where it's being stored. Right now, as you know, our range is not in the very best of conditions. Certainly, we expect to-
And that segues into my, my second part of my question. In our budget talks the last couple of days, in the CIP budget, I didn't see anything about, and I've been in that shooting range, and I know you're, you're keeping stuff dry in there with tarps and barrels. And I know that it was quite an expense to fix the roof, and that's something we've been, you know, putting off, putting off. But I was a little surprised that it wasn't brought up, you know, as one of the things, priorities.
It's something that's actually being handled this year. So it's not, we're not doing it in future years because it's being done.
Oh, it is being done.
And we're very excited about that.
Oh, see, I, I didn't even realize that. Okay, great, that's, I'm happy.
Put a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second by Commissioner Cancelo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me speak really quickly. Chief, before you leave, I really just want to commend you for all the hard work you've done and the turnaround that you've made for our department. You had a town hall at Forest Park Community the other day, and I, I don't know if we have numbers yet. Barbara, if she's here, I don't know. Do we have any numbers from how many people attended? No? It was packed. It was, okay, there were a lot of people, kids were playing outside because there was enough room inside. But I just want to commend you for what you did, and speaking to the community, and always just being willing to come out there and put all the information out on the line, being so transparent, and answering the tough questions that people were asking that, you know, could make or break our department, but being willing to just open it, be open in answering those questions. And I think the community really took well to that, and I got a lot of positive feedback from, from the community about how well they, they received you. So thank you for what you do. Thank you for the leadership that you're providing to our police department.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We've got a, we've got a great group, we've got a great group of men and women serving in the police department, and it's really an honor to be their chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item J.
Thank you. I had this pulled in regards to the Children Oasis International, and I'd like to have Reverend Whiteley come up and address this. I'm, I'm just saying, it's $2,400, but when I heard the program, it's not something, it's, the name of your company is international, but it's something that you all are doing here in Boynton, and I think that it needs to be stated to the audience, what you all are doing with the men. I, I was impressed when I heard it.
Yes, we are going to have something that called Ties That Bind. What it's about is about bringing in youth, young men. We are not doing it for the ladies yet, but the young men, and we want to teach them how to tie ties. We want to teach them how to interact with our police officers, just little things that they may not know. It is gonna be at Ben Venuto's because we want to tie it in with teaching them etiquette. We want to give them a good meal. Some of these young men may not have an opportunity to, to, well, to eat anything besides chicken fingers and french fries. So we want to introduce them to something else. John Philippe has volunteered to teach that portion of it. We spoke to Ted White about coming in to teach the communications portion. So he's agreed to be there, and it's just an opportunity to, to introduce our children to a little bit more.
I, I want to personally tell you, thank you for saying that you're gonna teach males how to tie ties. Being in the funeral business, I get tired of me and coming to me talking about, can you tie this tie for me? And I say, excuse me, if you lay down, I'll tie it. You know, that's it. As soon as we tie your tie, I'm just saying, but it's, it's a good segue from what you're doing, and they do need to learn how to tie their ties. Thank you.
I also want to share that it's a partnership between us and the Boynton Beach, and the East Boynton Wildcats and other organizations. So we just want to bring everyone in and just have a good time. Our expected students being there is about 100. So we thank you for anything that you could do to help us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda of non-items pulled?
So moved.
May I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Consent agenda passed. Item seven, bids and purchases over $100,000. Colin, would you come down and explain what we're doing here?
Yeah, Colin Graff, ACM. This is a change order, not really a change order. We have a developers' agreement with Ocean 500 to help cover the cost of off-site utility expansion that we've asked them to do as part of their project. Again, we talked about this a couple of meetings ago with another project, where utility ordinance, fee ordinance allows us to work with developers to pay for upgrades to utilities during their projects, so we don't have to go back in and dig up new stuff when we need to do the project. This particular project, we, we had an agreement, it's based on percentages of construction, we, you know, based on our ordinance. And this particular project, when they were working on it, they ran into a lot of problems underground that we weren't aware of. And it really did cost more to do. do. We had some upsizing of lines that we wanted to do, so we included that. So basically, what this is, is just change ordering the original estimated amount of 300, just off the top of my head, 305,000 to 444,000 for those unforeseen conditions and some additional upsizing we did. Once we got into the project, we wanted to make sure we're set up for the future. And the reason we have this is we receive capacity fees from the developers when they build. So we are basically fronting the money to this developer to build bigger pipes. I mean, other developers come in to build their projects, the pipes are there for them, and then they're paying us for that back. So it comes, it's an in and out of that fund that we use in utilities to make sure our utilities are in good shape.
Okay. I was looking at the exhibits. They said the estimated cost for the developer was 228,000, but the actual cost was, ended up being 188,000?
That was for one portion. This is, there were three different things we're paying for. It's water, some sewer line, and some stormwater work. So there was three, there's three different budgets that it come out of because those are separated in the utility budget. Overall, it was about 305,000 for the, for the city's portion of about a $2 million underground utility project. And that two mil, that cost went up because we found these unforeseen conditions. And again, the developers agreement was based on percentage of actual cost, not a flat number. So we're still using the same percentages. We're just now basing it on the actual cost that they experienced doing the work.
And the city staff is to approve this?
Yes. Our recommendation is to approve it.
Any other questions, comments? May I have a motion to approve?
Wait, wait, wait. I'm sorry. Speaking about this, how does this translate to 601? Because I know we talked about that, and that was a very long, detailed conversation. How does this relate to that?
Right. It's the same policy. We have a policy, again, 601, we're asking them to, if, we've actually already met with them. We are going to ask them to upgrade the line in front of their building. So we will pay a portion based on that ordinance, and the ordinance is written based on capacity of the line that they're upsizing. It's a big formula that you put in, and you plug the act, the cost into the formula, and out of it comes the city's portion of that upsizing. And again, the reason is, is we pay for it upfront, and then when another developer down the line uses that water, they pay us back in capacity fees. So it's, it's a way for us to get the utilities upgraded and upsized during their building, so we don't have to come back in and tear up new stuff to put it in for future growth.
Colin, there was some discussion on what the makeup of the pipe was. Have we found out what that makeup of that pipe is?
We're pretty sure it's asbestos concrete, yes. But we are, we do need a bigger pipe. So, you know, if we did not need a bigger pipe, they would pay for it all. But since we need a bigger pipe, we're going to pay for a percentage of it. And we've been meeting with them, and that will come back to you in a developers agreement at some point.
My other question regarding the developers agreement, do we assume some of the liability because they are acting as our agent?
The way it works is we, the developer pulls the permits for the lines. We sign off on the permits as both the, an engineer, and we have signed off as the owner. We inspect the project throughout. So we're accepting liability when we inspect the product to make sure it's built to the permit. And at the end, we sign the permit saying it was built in compliance with the plans, and we accept it for maintenance. So we accept the line at the end of the project for maintenance from them. And that's typical for any utility anywhere, pretty much in the country, is the way we do this. So I think that answers your question.
The liability issue, we, you know...
We pretty much take.
We see it being installed, and we make sure that it's installed correctly.
That's correct.
And then we accept responsibility after.
Yeah, and if the contractor makes a mistake installing, we make them fix it before we accept it.
Okay. Commissioner Katz, do you have a comment? All right. May I have a motion to approve proposed resolution number R16-089?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Onto code compliance and legal settlements. I'm actually going to have to recuse myself. I represent property owners who bought tax deeds, and so I do not feel that my opinion here will, I have a city attorney. Are you there? If I have a, if I have a client who has a similar matter, and I practice law in this same matter, can I make a judgment? Or should I recuse myself if I'm looking to make a...
The decision as to whether or not to recuse yourself is up to you. That's for you to evaluate. If you have a pecuniary benefit or in this matter, then that would be the deciding factor for you to evaluate.
So if I have a pecuniary benefit in the decision of this matter?
Yes, sir.
Then I, okay, then I'm going to recuse myself. Pass the gavel to Vice Mayor McCray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Code compliance and legal settlements, a considered settlement offer of 3100 Ocean Parkway Quiet Title Action. Want to address this?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Maxine Cheeseman. I'm an attorney representing 3100 Ocean Park Land Trust, the owner of the property. Just wanted to say that they purchased this property in a tax deed sale. They were not the official, the past owners who caused all the valuations and the, the running up of the fees and so on. There is, they purchased the property for $30,100. The estimated value now is $55,000. There is a surplus of about $19,578 minus clerk's fees. So we're asking for your hard costs, I think, are $12,744.92. We're proposing settlement to use up, pay all your hard costs from the surplus and whatever remaining. We will definitely support your claim for the entire amount of surplus to waive all the fees that has accrued.
Can we hear from staff?
Doesn't appear to be staff here for that, so I can assist if you have any questions. Oh, Chris Yanuzi?
He was right behind Salika's head.
Just kidding.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. If you can go ahead and address, you know, the city benefits and this, so that we can hear what you have to say in regards to this matter.
My involvement in this has simply been dealing with the city attorney, Farina Ret, in providing her with the information on the total amount that the liens were. There are 10 cases for this particular owner or the prior owner.
Okay, what is that amount for the 10 cases?
Unfortunately, I was not prepared to speak this evening. Unfortunately, I don't have the total. I know that the, we did discuss specifically the hard costs, which are, the balance would be fine.
All right, let me, let me address it this way then. If we accept the hard costs, would the city be at a loss? Because the last one that came before us, we did also a 10%, you know, and their amount.
Well, if I heard the offer, if, if the hard costs are being covered, the $12,000, which would be actual money that was out of pocket for doing the mowing and boarding up of the, of the residence, and, and the additional seven, approximately $7,000, would also be coming back to the city, I think that's a fine settlement.
So we're looking at $19,000 plus?
To the city manager, for my information, don't we have, when properties have these heavy liens on them, we forgive them because developer comes in or somebody buys them, we have this forgiveness, I forget the exact name that we use for it, where as long as they rehab it and get it back online within six months, that we forgive most of that fine or some of that fine. Is it, would this qualify for that?
Under a stipulation agreement?
Yeah, that, exactly. That's our conditional release of lien program.
Right, correct.
But I don't think quite, I'm not quite sure. I need to rely on legal and what quite, yeah, it's a different type of legal matter.
Okay, this is a whole different thing. Okay.
Okay, I need to speak to you again. So your client is in favor of paying the $19,578.8?
Right. That's a surplus that's held with the clerk now, the county clerk. And we would definitely support that, and we would get an order in the quiet title action releasing that to you. I know you have already filed a claim, but it hasn't been dispersed to you as yet, and we would definitely support that, and we'd get the order in the quiet title so that you would get that money.
Do you have any other questions?
I just, what type of property is this? And what is, and what is the intended use of this property?
It's residential.
Single family?
Single family.
And?
And it's, it's only valued at $55,000. And they have, you know, they're in the process of completing all the renovations and clearing it up.
Okay, so you're willing to give us the surplus, which is 19, our hard cost of 12, so we're basically making seven, and he purchased the house for 30 some odd thousand dollars?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Your motion?
I, I'll make that in form of a motion.
I hear a second. I'm going to second the motion. I can.
You got to pass the, how do you do that? Who do you pass that gavel to?
I'll second it just to make this easier.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto, what is it? Onto item 11, unfinished business. We have someone from the Historic Resources Preservation Board to discuss their recommendation. Yep. Mr. Adams?
Good evening. I'm Warren Adams, Historic Preservation Planner. The city commission had actually directed the Historic Resources Preservation Board to come up with some recommendations for recognizing historically significant people from the city. This was really generated by a request for a street sign to be erected on MLK Junior Boulevard, not renaming the street, but just recognizing the history of the street. The street sign would read Robert E. Wells Memorial Avenue. The Historic Preservation Board recognized that before you introduce any sort of recognition program, there are a number of things you have to consider. One of these is cost, and one of these is the application process, and another is the eligibility for recognition. Any program should be equitable. It should be applicable to anyone of historic interest from throughout the city. It should be manageable. It should be cost-effective. It should be aesthetically pleasing, based on research, and it shouldn't lead to confusion with regard to street signs. So we had come up with a number of recommendations and costs, and we are now really looking for direction from city commission on how you would like to proceed with this, or even indeed if you would like to proceed with a recognition program. So that's really where we are at the moment. There are a number of different options there, and it's really open to really what you feel would be the most appropriate way forward if you want to move forward at all.
Let me go ahead and address this. I'm in favor of moving forward with this because, Mr. Wells, you all did your research. His grandfather, he does...
Mr. Warren?
Nope.
Mr. Wells?
Wells. I'm talking about Mr. Wells.
Okay, Mr. Wells. Warren, got it.
Right. I'm talking two different people, both Ws. It was research that Mr. Wells, he deserves this recognition. I appreciate Minister Wright for coming down and continuously, you know, saying, when are we going to do something? But what I'm really saying is that what we have is that pocket park that we, at the strategic plan that we stated that we was going to do on MLK Boulevard. And when they presented everything to us, there is a plaque that could be on that park, you know, recognizing his grandfather. And I'm just saying, I don't know if he, you know, if the commission wants to name the street, or go ahead and just name that park after his grandfather. As the one that represents District 2, I'm in favor of naming the park after his grandfather so that he can get recognition. I'm just saying, and that would give the gentleman that sits and stand on the corners and stand down on MLK Boulevard a place to go and congregate instead of them standing on the boulevard. That's my take.
I'd just like to, I'd just like to add, Mr. Wells, you were persistent. My hat's off to you.
That's Mr. Wright now. That's the grandson.
Mr. Wright, I'm sorry. And I learned more about the history by you being up here at this podium and speaking on the, on the issue. And I appreciate that. It was really well-taken. I'm in favor of this. I think that the, this pocket park that we've been talking about, I think it'd be an ideal spot for that recognition for your family, for your grandfather, and I would be in favor of that. Glory be to God.
To God be the glory.
Would you mind speaking to the microphone? Definitely be conducive for people to have somewhere to sit, especially high-end, you know. But, you know, the plaque cool, but the signs, I mean, that was initially what I think and my family really would like because it was originally Wells Avenue. And if it's going to be any historic, let's stay with the truth, and it's about real, being real. And so, I mean, right where y'all are going to do the pocket park, I think strategically that would be a great place just to put the sign. It's a little small sign. We already checked out what it looked like, and it's $150. If I have to pay for that in my own pocket, I will. But at any rate, it would say Robert E. Wells Memorial Avenue. That would give someone sight visual right now. I'm not talking, the park is down the road. I wouldn't want another family member of mine dying. We only have a proclamation. If they don't know nothing about the proclamation, they won't know nothing about their, you know, their legacy, you know. And so I would like visuals. Well, who is Robert E. Wells? Now you'll start checking. So it's a simple sign right in that area perhaps where you want to, I don't know which one of those pieces of property y'all want to put that park. But right there would be nice to have a sign saying Robert E. Wells Memorial Avenue right now at this point until the park is done. I would not like to wait till a park going over the signs when initially that's what I preferred and my family had conferred, and we thought would be good. It was originally Wells Avenue. He cut that trail there. And so I don't think it should be a problem. I don't even think there should be even, even a matter of debate in that respect, because we can name a pool after a lifeguard. We definitely can, you know, put a sign, just recognize my great-grandfather, all that he did. He was the pioneer of this town, you know.
Reverend Wright, I understand what you're saying, but if we go ahead and get the sign drawn up and present it to you and your family, and then when we get the park built, we can install it, then I'm just saying, I don't, I don't want to put something over there, and it might get vandalized. I'm just saying, we have over at Heritage Park, we have a monument out there, and I go through there three or four times. I got to constantly tell people, please do not sit on that. I know that is an urgency for you.
Yeah. But I, but listen, I tell you this. You can bet your bottom dollar, there would be no vandalism on not anything that I'm initiating in the heart of Orange Beach, not Minister Bernard Wright. To God be the glory, as I told Jeff. I am the pipeline down there. You are a commissioner, and God knows I respect and honor your position, and we need you. But let me tell you something. When it comes down to that ground route down there, I am the pipeline. I boast this in Jesus the Christ, because if it had anything to do with me, I wouldn't even get recognized. You look at my past. I've been counted out a long time ago. Jeff can go to the NCIC and see that. So in me, all you see is the grace, goodness, mercy of God. So I'm saying that you won't have to worry about vandalism. In fact, there's a whole lot of things I can institute right now. In fact, in cleaning up things, doing things, getting folks to do things over there. So Mike, you can kind of, you know, rest, you know, I mean, despair, you know.
Okay.
You're mad with anything in that respect, but I would definitely like to have that sign there. It's, I mean...
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and offer a motion that we go ahead and proceed.
There's another person who would like to speak.
Hi, Barbara Reedy, Chair of the Historic Resources Preservation Board. I just wanted to clarify. We're very grateful that you're willing to approve what Reverend Wright wants and has wanted. But the big picture is Warren came forward with a program in case someone else wants something commemorated, okay? So that's the big picture. Please don't lose sight of the big picture while we're all excited to give Reverend Wright what he wants, okay? So Warren has formulated a program. The parameters of the program is what he's seeking from you, whether you put some budget money in to pay for signs, whether you want to do one sign a month. Just give us some guidance if you want him to come back and tell you, you know, how we're willing to run the program, we're willing to participate, okay? So I just wanted to clarify.
I think this is something we can take on a case-by-case basis. You know, this is not something that's going to come before us every month, I wouldn't think.
No, not at all. We don't, we don't anticipate the frequency of that frequency. But if we had parameters for it, like an application form, like how many years, or what did they do, what was their contribution to the city, there's, you know, guidelines, yes.
Excuse me. Right, we have been given, rather, I've been given the parameters. I don't know if the other elected officials have been given those parameters, but I met with the city manager one-on-one, and I got the information from you all. And we would not, trust me, we would not lose the ball. I'm just saying, this has been something that has been long overdue. We're just trying to proceed, I'm just saying, to get this taken care of. Reverend Wright has been coming out, I know for over a year, almost probably two years, you know, three. Well, I know he's been coming out as long as I have, and this has been something that has been on his heart, on his mind.
Yes.
And I'm just saying, for someone who has, his grandfather who has dedicated his life for that section over there, and started with all the other accolades, I'm just saying, we're trying to just get this taken care of, and then we can go back and revisit what the Historical Preservation Society has stated just to do.
Okay, very good. I'm thrilled that Reverend White's getting his signs. That's excellent news.
Can I offer a motion now?
Yes, your mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to offer a motion that we proceed with the sign, and when the park is completed, then we will install the sign. But as Reverend Wright said, if he wants the sign out there, you know, if y'all want to, go ahead and put it out there, I'm all, I'm all in favor of it.
Before you, we got a second. Mr. Warren, is this, you're consistent with your recommendations?
Yes, well, we...
Or what the agenda item is?
Yeah, we were, we're looking for commission guidance. Yes, if a program was introduced, the sign would more than likely meet any requirements the program would put forward. So we, we feel that, yes, the sign would be appropriate. What we need you to direct us to do just now is, do you want to do this on a case-by-case basis, or do you want me to draft up an actual program that we can bring to the commission at a future date?
So this would come with a recommendation by the Historic Resources Board?
Yes.
And so that, it's already been approved by the Historic Resources Board, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, we've come up with a number of options. It's really up to the commission. Do you want plaques? Do you want street signs?
No, no, I'm talking about the Robert, Robert Wells. That's already been approved.
Yes.
And this is just creating the, the program?
Yes.
For the implementation of the approval?
Yes.
So we're creating a program not just for the Robert E. Wells, but a program for all future?
Yeah, the question is, do you want the program to be street signs, or do you want the program to be plaques? And I don't need to know that at the moment. You know, if you're...
I think we can do that on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
What they're, what the requestor's doing, if they're putting their own money in, whether or not, I think that's something you can put in the application as well.
Okay.
I see you have very many options here, from street pavers to a new monument, monument, going from $30 all the way up to $5,000. So again, this is something that I think we can consider on a case-by-case basis whenever someone's coming. Like, for example, let's say they want to put a bench at a park or something. That could be something that if they're willing to, maybe we can 50/50 on it or something like that. But like I said, like some other individuals said, I think we can do it case by case. And I think this is a great program, and we can pay tribute and pay homage to the individuals who have put their blood, sweat, and tears into making... who have put their blood, sweat, and tears into making Boynton Beach what it is today. So thank you for working on it and, and creating it.
Thank you.
And the rest of the Preservation Board as well, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
I get a, so do we have a motion to-
A motion to approve.
The recommendations of this?
Recommendation, the Preservation Board that, you know, we go ahead and draw up the, the plaque or the, the sign that will be placed on this-
This is for a program, for the sign?
Program for the sign, but I'm gonna also, let's, let's do Wells first.
I think we have to make two separate motions.
Yeah, we gotta do two separate motions.
I think you're asking for something different.
That works great.
All right, the first motion would be that we go ahead and approve the sign for Mr. Robert E. Wells to be placed on the Pocket Park over on MLK Boulevard, and the first priority will be to draw up the sign.
Now, let me ask, which one?
Right, you know, the-
I seen the one that had the little round-
The, the issue that we have before us is the recommendations for a program, so that Mr. Wright can say, this is what I would like, and ask us to approve what he would like.
I think the way we had envisioned, envisioned it was, if you want to approve a program, then yes, we can go ahead and approve the sign, because the sign would meet the requirements of a program. So if you approve the program, then the sign would meet the requirements of the program.
Don't have to approve the sign.
Okay.
So can we approve the-
Okay, so let's approve the program.
All right, we go ahead and approve the program that has been presented to us by the Historical Preservation Board.
Wonderful. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. And now can I ask, do, do you go ahead and approve the sign for Minister Wright as part of that program?
You know, can we get a motion for that, the approval of the sign?
Right, so, so moved after the preservation, I'm just saying, we take it back to the Preservation Board, you all get together on your sign, we gonna go ahead and say that we are going to offer a motion to approve the sign, and you all work out the logistics and tell us what sign you all decided on, so you can move forward with it.
All right, do I have a second to approve the sign?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Just point information, Mr. Wright, have, have we approved the Pocket Park?
We have not approved the Pocket Park.
Oh, I didn't think so, okay.
And the strategic plan, but we place the sign on MLK Boulevard, if we don't approve the park, trust me.
The sign will be there.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, on to, does anyone want to remove the proposed resolution 16-076 after the table?
For 90 days.
All right, continue on to new business, a continuation of the discussion concerning the Quantum Park Overlay District, which was originally discussed at the June 21, 2016 Commission's meeting, and to have comments by the Overlay District staff and representatives of property owners within the Overlay District. So I guess we'll start with the Overlay District staff, followed by representatives of the property owners within the Overlay District. Do we have a representative of the Overlay District?
Marty Perry for the Overlay District, Mr. Mayor. With, with all due respect, it's the property owner's complaint here, and I'd like to hear what it is so that we know what to respond to.
Okay. Does anyone have a, against that? All right, we'll begin with the property owners.
Absolutely, for the record, my name is Andre Park, 6111 Broken Sound Parkway, but I'd like to take a, like to disagree with-
You apologize to interrupt you, Andre, do you mind if I say something first?
Sure. Because I, I placed this on the agenda a couple of weeks back as a future agenda item, and then put it on the agenda, just to kind of make sure everybody was aware that I was looking into an issue regarding the Overlay District, and just the fact that through looking at their budget, I, I came to the, the first glance conclusion that the city could perform their services at a greatly discounted rate to the taxpayer, and through some investigation and some findings from city staff, you know, those, those assumptions or those beliefs on my part have, have kind of proven true. So the, my purpose in putting this on the agenda isn't to address complaints or concerns, which have not been necessarily voiced to me, it's merely to review the Overlay District and to identify the fact that I just stated that the budget, in my opinion, and bearing facts based on investigation from our staff, is, is much larger than it need be, and that the city could perform the services at a deeply discounted rate. So just again, to clarify why it's on here, this isn't about, you know, complaints, this isn't about individuals on the board or, or property owners, at least that, I'm stating that as a, as a matter of why I pushed this, this item onto the agenda. I'm just interested in identifying whether or not we can do a better job in providing these services and providing a better rate to our residents. So there's no, I'll state that there's no complaint or central issue here of that nature, it's just a, a matter of fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers on behalf of the city and the Overlay District, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, yeah, I was looking at the proposed by staff, and they didn't, you know, they did not give us any advisement whether we dissolve the Overlay District, it's whether we discuss it or not discuss it, so.
Well, there will be opportunities for staff to speak today, but there will be a recommendation, there are, there are legal issues that matter, because there are lawsuits pending pertaining to the district, but again, that's not the, the thrust of why it's on the agenda. So I know that because this item had been tabled years ago in, in reference to a dispute between legal representation and the district, that they've been asked to speak pertaining to that matter, and I won't stop them from speaking pertaining to that matter, but, you know, this is about identifying inefficient use of taxpayer monies in the city of Boynton Beach, specifically the Overlay District. So city staff will come forward at my request and, and validate some of the claims that's in the backup regarding the substantial savings to taxpayers.
Please go ahead, proceed.
Thank you. Again, for the record, my name is Andre Park, 6111 Broken Sound Parkway, I represent Olin Properties. I want to thank the City Commission for bringing this matter back, and not as adversarial hearing as indicated, and simply as a review of this dependent district and your ordinance, this is actually your ordinance that created this district, and it was created based upon the premise that the Overlay District would provide the best possible service to property owners within Quantum Park. This is not just an aspirational ordinance, and it's not simply aspirational, it's required by the Florida statutes. Florida statutes also gives you the right, as a city, to review the record and the performance of your dependent district and see if this is providing that function. Now, two of the principal factors with respect to what your criteria is, and this is specifically indicated within the Florida statutes, is whether or not the city can provide that role, it can assume the role of the Overlay District and provide the services. Additionally, can that's, can your city provide that service at a less costly rate? Now, what we're talking about, and your staff report indicates that you can provide that service, provide it for $420,000 less, that's 46%, and it's very important to not only Olin Properties, but the other property owners, because the property owners are assessed, they're assessed for every single dime of that cost. Now, it's pretty clear that a 46% reduction would be important to all the property owners. Additionally, it's pretty clear that the district is not the best means and the best manner of providing these services. Now, as we sit here tonight, the primary beneficiaries of this, of this district are the, simply those contractors that get paid by this district. They don't have to pay the 46% premium, and they get paid by this district. Some of them are here tonight, and essentially being paid, and they're being paid down the line, because those costs of the payments for the invoices are being passed on to the property owners. Now, what we're asking you to do is go back to basics, basic principle of government, you provide the services, and you provide the services at the best possible rate for your citizens, for your residents, and for your prop, for your business owners. We're asking you to go back to basics, dissolve this district, it's a cash cow as it is, it's ineffective, and it's simply inefficient, $420,000 more. So we're asking you to make up, put your mind, make a decision, and dissolve the district, and move forward for the benefit of Quantum Park property owners. Thank you, I was very brief, so thank you. Other individuals would like to speak as well?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Tom Sheen, I'm General Counsel for the Children's Services Council of Palm Beach County, 2300 High Ridge Road, Boynton Beach. We are one of the property owners affected by the Overlay District, and I'm here simply to note that, given the staff report that was part of the agenda tonight, as Commissioner Katz pointed out, it does appear that there would be significant savings to all the property owners, including the Children's Services Council, by abolishing the Overlay District. If this is in fact the case, we would ask the commission to go forward and to do that, and to carry out the mission of the city, which was on the screen over there as I came in, to provide services in a financially responsible manner. And so we would ask that you keep that in mind as you listen to your staff tonight, and make your conclusions, and take the appropriate action. Thank you.
My name is Chuck Giraji, I represent High Ridge Investments, which owns the building at 2400 High Ridge, and I believe District 4. This thing, it's just mathematics, it's the city study, isn't that correct? And the study indicates 420,000, 140, approximately, 38, 28?
Anybody have the numbers?
The staff report indicates that, based on this review, the city would assume approximately $110,000 in maintenance costs and 364,000, 337 of debt payment until the debt is retired. This represents ultimately $420,000 less than what is currently funded by the property owners within the district, equating to 46% savings for taxpayers.
My brothers and I, we pay about $41,000, $42,000, I think, in property taxes. I mean, to me, this seems like an elementary issue, unless I'm missing something, I'm willing to listen to the other side, it's a city proposal, the city knows what it can do. Do you have any reason to believe that the people who generated the report did it inaccurately or biased?
Not a chance.
Okay, so it looks like a pretty clear cloud issue, in my opinion, and they've reviewed all the services that they've asked? I mean, everything that the Overlay District, is there anything omitted?
Colin, would you be willing to speak on the-
You might want to allow both sides to speak first, before we get into a staff report.
Okay, well, it's just a question that I have pending, whoever's the most competent person to answer that. I mean, obviously, I don't want gaps in services, but if everything's been evaluated, it seems like it's an elementary question. I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Without staff speaking, we are property owners in the Overlay District, Wright?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, for the record.
Perry? Well, with all due respect to, again, Marty Perry representing the Overlay District, and with all due respect to Mr. Katz, the impression that we were given by Mr. Cheroff was that really this was going to be an opportunity for Mr. Park to present his complaint, which was set forth in a lengthy letter a couple of years ago, that was delayed by city action as a result of litigation. And to be honest with you, the, the numbers that are in the city staff's report, and I've read the report, were numbers that were generated with our assistance, we provided the numbers to the administration so that they would be able to write that report. We don't really question the numbers. I think what's important here is to understand the issues. The, the actual cost of operating the district, the maintenance of the district, if you look at the budget for the district, and it was presented to the city staff, is that it costs $175,000 to operate the district. But if you look at the rest of the budget, you will find that the additional cost that's in there is a result of four pieces of litigation that have been brought by one property owner, which is Olin Properties. This district, for all intents and purposes, has existed since 1996, initially as a community development district, and then subsequently in 2005, the City Commission approved the, the develop, the creation of the Overlay District. The reality is, is that for a period from 1996 to 2010, there were really no issues in this district, there was no dissatisfaction by anybody. Mr. Olenik, Mr. Olenikoff, who is the Principal of Olin Properties, was one of the original members of the district, of the Overlay District Board. Together with him, there was a gentleman by the name of Fike, who was one of his employees, who also was one of the original members of this board. They both basically were members of the board. Mr. Olenikoff, for whatever reason, never took the oath of office, never participated in any meetings for four years, and in 2010 submitted a letter of resignation. Mr. Fike participated, there never were any issues. The issues arose in 2012, and the issues arose over, frankly, and very factually, and although these items are in dispute in the litigation, and they're, and they're being, they're being dealt with in that area. But the issues arose because Olin Properties chose not to abide by the rules and regulations affecting the development of property, plain and simple. Now, clearly, those are disputed facts, they'll argue that that's not accurate, they did everything they were supposed to do, you know, the, the resolution of those issues would require you're sitting down and looking at all the factual issues at dispute. But if you look at what's happening here, basically, what, what has happened is that Olin Properties, by virtue of all the litigation, which includes expense to the city of Boynton Beach, because you're in there defending this litigation also, has caused this district to incur some $200,000 of expenses, and part of this current budget is budgeted amounts for another $140,000 in legal fees. So what's happening is a very wealthy individual, okay, is essentially attempting to bankrupt this particular Overlay District so that he can get his way. And if this city commission decides that that's fair, and that's the way they want to go, that's fine, you have the right, under the statute, to dissolve this district. However, as has been recognized in the report, and not, not really clearly, didn't go into any detail, but there's four pending lawsuits, and those lawsuits are against individual board members of the district in their individual capacity, against one of the, the engineering firm for the, for the board and one of their employees, and some resolution of that, of that litigation has to be resolved. You can't simply dissolve the district without considering, how do we deal with this litigation? Now, I suppose that Olin Properties and is, and the other company owned by Mr. Olenikoff could come in here and magnanimously agree to just dismiss with prejudice all those lawsuits against the city and everybody else, and that would complete the thing and take, and take it over. I can understand Children's Services Council being concerned, because they, whether they realize it or not, have been exposed to unnecessary additional expense, simply because one property owner doesn't want to play by the rules, plain and simple. Now, we've had examples in the paper recently, we had a property owner who has gone and created a city because he didn't like the rules in Palm Beach County. I mean, that's really what's going on here. So factually, you know, you have to get into the details to understand the real story that's going on here, but yes, you can dissolve the district, but to do that, it's going to take more than simply an act or an ordinance dissolving the district, you need to get into the meat of this matter. There are existing contracts that have to be dealt with, there are commitments, so it's not as simple as one might think. So I'd just like to leave it with that, you, you know, you have the right to do what you like to do, but you can't do it without consequences, and those have to be dealt with by your staff, and I think they'll advise you of that. Thank you very much.
So before you leave-
Yes, sir.
The complaints, is there attorney's fees for the prevailing party?
You know, I'm not representing anybody in the litigation.
Okay.
I've read the complaints, to be honest with you, I don't think there are attorney's fees for prevailing parties in all of the litigation that's been filed, it's possible that might be in some, there's one, there's one case that is in the form of condemnation, that there possibly, there could be attorney's fees. There's another case that's a property rights case, possibly there, but I haven't really looked at it to examine that.
Okay. My second question is also, I guess regarding the cases, is that the Quantum Park Overlay District is preventing, I guess, Secured Holdings and the other, and Olin Properties Corporation from developing land after it's already been approved by the city?
They, well, there were some site development permits that were issued several years ago by someone at the city, and as a result of those site development permits, and that's really what's led to a lot of the problems here, as a result of those site development permits, Olin Properties actually went on and constructed things that are property that belonged to the district, not to Olin, they violated the environmentally sensitive lands, they did a number of things. You know, we don't understand why that permit, that site development permit was issued, but subsequent to that, there was a new city, city employee who took a look at this and said, no, we're not doing that, my understanding is, no, we're not doing that anymore that way, because this is the way it should be done, following all these rules. You know, those, again, are factual issues that you would have to dig into if you were to look into that aspect of it.
So just, so you're saying is, is that there was a property built not following the rules, and that because he, there's a, because the rules are being enforced, they can't build a property, or they can't get a site plan?
They, they have eventually gotten the permits for two of those properties. The third property, and those, and those basically have been built or in the final status- stages of being built. The third property, they just stopped working on altogether, they never went forward to get any further permits. That was Lot 52. Lot 100 and Lot 17A, they have all their permits.
And they've developed it?
They, they have either finally developed or they partially developed them.
Okay, and, and is that, now, is the Quantum Park overlay district going to sue anyone? Or is there a counterclaim for them violating any of the rules?
No, there are no, no counterclaims, there are just defenses that have been presented.
All right, so here, I did not. Well, just, so the question is, is that, you know, if you get permits, you're allowed to build, correct?
I'm sorry?
Who, what's, you know, if there's permits to allow them to build, why is there a lawsuit when they can just build it?
Because they're seeking $20 million in damages.
For the ability to build?
For their property rights action, claiming that they were delayed, et cetera, they lost profits, et cetera.
So they have their permits, everything's approved, and so this is more or less, in essence, saying, "We, we don't want to fight the legal battle anymore, you can have the property because the permits are already issued." If I'm not.
I'm not sure what this is, to be honest with you, you know.
If I could speak. Well, let him finish, and then you can go ahead.
Given the fact that it's on the agenda.
Commissioner Katz. So you, you don't understand what the complaint?
I'm not really sure what it is. You know, I think, I think the goal here is to dissolve the district, plain and simple, end of story. And that's fine, you know, you can go ahead and do that, but you can't do it without repercussions. There's, there's a million, almost $1,800,000 in debt that needs to be assumed here. I mean, there, there are all these things that you need to take care of, and that's fine, if you want to do that, that's your option. Yet that, that's available to you.
All right, is there any more questions for Mr. Perry? Commissioner Katz?
All right, so to step backwards a little bit. First, I have zero intention of asking for the district to be dissolved at this meeting tonight. Not my intent. Second, I've heard all the different angles of the various lawsuits regarding Olin and the district, and none of them have anything to do with the reason why I'm pursuing this issue. Obviously, they cannot be dismissed because there are four lawsuits. The purpose of this was, one, to present the facts that the city, if we were to take over this geographic area, could provide almost a 50% discount to taxpayers, and then to investigate whether or not resolution can be reached regarding those lawsuits, since they all stem from a single entity. Now, we have the absolute right and discretion as a commission to disband the district, but I don't think that would be prudent because we do not know, as you stated, the ramifications regarding the lawsuits. However, that is my sole intent today, once all this information is presented, to simply ask this commission to direct city attorney and his staff to look into the various parties and see what will happen or what will come from those four lawsuits should we dissolve the district. So again, no intention of dissolving the district today because there are all sorts of things that need to be hashed out before that could even occur, it might not even be possible given those lawsuits. I'm not a lawyer, so that's why I defer to our highly paid city attorney to answer these questions for me over time. But again, there's compelling enough evidence that the city could provide greatly discounted services at or above current service levels. There's no question that we can provide these services comparable, if not better. I don't think anyone could honestly argue that fact. The point here is there is over $400,000 in savings potentially. Now, with regards to the lawsuits, again, my, my request to the commission tonight will simply be to direct the city attorney to investigate further how these four lawsuits would come to an end. But again, I'm driven by the cost savings for the taxpayers because regardless of what some billionaire wants or what some people on some board want, that nobody knows because nobody has any clue about this overlay district unless they're directly involved. I think it's important that transparency and light be shown on this issue. Regarding the debt, my personal belief is, based on the numbers, if we were to disband the district, assess a special tax equal to the current tax value that is being assessed on people, that that $400,000 in savings could be directly applied to that $1.8 billion or million dollars in debt. So with regards to that debt, we would absolutely be taking on a debt, but we would be taking on a revenue source, basically $400,000 to the surplus of what we need to pay for that debt. So I broke this up when I questioned staff into three basic issues. One was the savings, and based on our staff report, and I'm sure that, you know, given the opportunity, they will gladly defend that, and I have nothing but the utmost faith in my staff and what they presented to us. So there is substantial cost savings, $400,000 plus dollars. Two, the debt. I'm not interested in taking on debt as a city, but if we take on $1.8 million in debt and we are able to put surplus money the taxpayers are paying now that are not being used to finance that debt, we can kill that debt in a much shorter time period, that's a positive benefit to the taxpayers, that's a positive benefit to the city because it's, as it's been explained to me, is that this district ultimately really isn't supposed to exist beyond the debt payments. It's been explained to me, and it's been even stated, or you can, you can kind of, you know, agree or deny on this, but, but at some point, the city took over operations of the streets and some of the landscapings, and someone told me, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but at the time, you posed the question, should the city not just take over the entire operation if we have taken on the streets and we've taken on the landscape?
We did in fact have that discussion when we were negotiating that agreement. There was a dispute between the district and the city relative to whether the city was handling their expenses of the thing. We resolved that favorably between the two of us. We reached an agreement, and part of that discussion entailed, why doesn't the city just take over the entire district? At that time, the city said, "No, we don't want to do that." One of the reasons the city didn't want to do that was they didn't want to assume the debt. Now, at that point, the debt was somewhere in the neighborhood of around $3 million. The debt's been paid down in the last three years since that occurred. You know, and I, I don't want to debate you, Mr. Katz, I mean, the reality is the numbers, the numbers that the city staff have put forward, we don't argue with those numbers. The only, the only issue that I would argue with you is this, is this $400,000, but that's neither here nor there. I mean, I, I think those are details that need to be worked out, but a great deal of what you're talking about really lies in the expense of litigation, and that's, that's really what's led to this entire problem.
I agree 100%, hence why, like I said, I have zero intention whatsoever of, of asking to dissolve the district without knowledge of the implications to the city, and at, you know, the, the wishes of the board, I simply just would like to direct our city attorney to investigate whether or not those lawsuits will have negative implications or impacts on the city and our finances, or whether they can be resolved. Because again, as it seems, based on what was stated by representation for Olin, and based on what you're saying here, there's no denying that this is, this is some, in my opinion, some bizarre feud between a billionaire and a number of people who represent a district in Boynton who do not even live in Boynton Beach, and my concern, my only concern, is whether or not the taxpayers in Boynton Beach are getting maximum return on their tax dollars. And based on this report, and again, I'm sure that over time, if we're allowing the city attorney to investigate the lawsuits and their implications, more detail can be fleshed out regarding this financial estimate from the city staff. So I'm not asking for anything more at this point, and obviously, everyone else can weigh in on this, but to investigate whether or not those lawsuits can be resolved, and if so, the financial savings to the district and those residents is, is in my opinion, undeniable. Again, I trust my city staff and their estimates here, so that, that's where I'm at.
We have absolutely no problem in working with your city staff relative to that.
Any comments regarding this?
It's a hard act to follow.
Yeah.
All right, so Commissioner Katz, would you like to make a motion of what you've been saying?
Yeah, I'd like to motion for city attorney, you know, and, and his people to reach out to all relevant parties regarding these four lawsuits and try to come to some terms to understand whether or not the potential dissolution of this district has any negative implications for the city, and if so, what? And if so, are we willing to take them on or not?
I'll second that.
This discussion, are we, are we pretty solid with this, with that potential saving?
Propose your test.
Not to get into a lot of detail, just a simple yes and no with that, Colin, I know you did the formula and you did the, the numbers.
We're pretty confident that those are conservative numbers, yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
A question regarding the numbers, there's an ending fund balance of 943,000, is that their money in the balance, you know, in the bank?
That was based on the last audit that was done. I'm not sure exactly what that money is, but in the audit, generally, the ending fund balance at a certain date is the fund balance that they have cash on hands.
Okay, thank you.
Can I get a second?
I already seconded it.
All right, there's discussion.
Yes, Mayor, yeah.
Can I, all in favor?
Aye.
So, motion to, motion is approved for city staff, city attorney and city staff to look at resolving the lawsuits. And moving on. Going on to legal, do you mind reading 14A?
A resolution of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, accepting four quick claim deeds from the Boynton Beach Community Redevelopment Agency to formally accept the additional right of way and utility easements for the infrastructure improvements associated with the Model Park project along Northwest 10th Avenue, West Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, and Northwest 11th Avenue, and providing an effective date.
Any discussion? Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We thank you for, for the deed, CRA. Item B, please.
Resolution of the City Commission of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, approving an amended outdoor lease agreement between the city of Boynton Beach and Wilton Manor Street Systems, Inc., for one outdoor advertising structure with two electronic changeable signed bases, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the lease agreement and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve, I discuss you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, discussion.
Thank you. The reason I, I'm just saying, when this came on, this was something that has been approved prior, but it's going in District Two, and I, I got a little, a lot upset because I said, "Why are you all giving us another billboard?" And we went back and checked the records, and, and this billboard was already designated for this area, so it's nothing new, it's just a continuation of what we should have done, and we're doing it now, that's all.
Any further discussion? May I have a motion to approve resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Legal, item C.
Ordinance of the City Commission of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 13 of the Code of Ordinances, Section 13-4, classification and fee schedule to provide a 5% increase in business tax fees, providing for conflict, separability, codification, and an effective date.
Since this is an ordinance, if there's anyone who would like from the audience to speak regarding this, please step down. Seeing none. Would anyone like to discuss this on the board? May I get a?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Grant?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCray?
Aye.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramos?
Yes.
And Commissioner Casella? Five to zero.
Lori, would you like to speak on the future agenda items?
Yes, we have coming up in August, we should be ready to be bringing forward the Ocean Ridge Fire Services Contract, which is a, a new contract. We have, our budget hearings we're announcing here, we have, our first public hearing for the budget adoption will be Thursday, September 8 at 6:30 PM. Then we will need to hold a special city commission meeting for the adoption of our final fire assessment rate, which the commission at this point is proposing the rate to be unchanged. That's going to be September 13 at 6:00 PM. Then our final adoption hearing for the budget will take place on September 20, Tuesday night at 6:30, and then we will be ready to roll into the new fiscal year. We're going to be bringing forward a customer service policy at the next meeting. What we don't see on here that we talked about today would be the disposition of our, the red light camera program, we'll be talking to you on August 2nd about that as well. We'll be bringing forward the RFP for the medical, the employee medical clinic, probably, I'm guessing, the second meeting in August. And the mental health committee has asked to come and speak to you on August 2nd to give you an update and highlights of what they've been up to.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.[1779.03]